So since we have everyone here, I'd like to call to order the Williston Board of School Directors' regular meeting at 6:56 PM. Let's just, what we'll do here tonight is just to review with you guys is we'll go into executive session and it'll move us in in a moment. And then when we come out, we'll jump into adjustments to the agenda. There's only a couple and then we'll kind of go back into our regular routine from there. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So can, I have a motion to move us into executive session as it relates to a student discipline matter and I'd like to invite in Board Counsel and Administration.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session, so we're going to move out of this room. We're back in regular session at 8:25. Not try and read the CSSU agenda, that would not be helpful. Moved everything on out. Thanks, and I got out of here. I just wanted to get it through. There we go, I got it. So we just exited executive session. Rather than waiting until the action item section, is it agreeable that we take a motion on our, on our actions? Okay, so, and help me Board members craft this motion correctly and Cindy if I don't do it, I'm going to make sure we have it right.
In the matter of the student disciplinary, in the student disciplinary matter, I move that the Board uphold the Administration's decision and that with the finding that there was no abuse of discretion.
Can I have a second for that motion?
I'll make a second.
Okay, we really can't have any discussion on it, so.
Upon thorough review and consideration.
Yeah.
If that could be added into the language.
Yeah, that's actually a good way to put it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Adjustments to the agenda. I think there's only one minor one in the, in the, make sure I got this right here. Yes, in the consent agenda, item 8 dot 3 dot 5, where it says we're adopting the teacher's supervision and evaluation policy, we are in fact repealing it. Is that correct Cindy?
That's the recommendation, yes.
Yes, okay.
Kevin, I have one more request.
Yes.
I received a third field trip proposal today, just today, so I was not able to include it in the Board pre-read materials. I am asking that the Board consider reviewing it along with the other two for approval this evening.
Have you got copies?
I have copies for the Board.
Is everybody okay with adding that to the existing action item? Okay, we'll do that.
I'll pass those on. I'll pass them around to that side.
Okay, does anybody else have any adjustments they'd like to? I think Josh, you had mentioned you might want to poll.
The personnel matter.
Of the LOA 7 dot 1, right here?
Yes, I'd like to have that heard in executive session.
Okay, we'll do that very quickly at the end. Alright, so let's do this. Audience and Communications, I think if, no, I didn't think so. Hearing none. Reports to the Board, Act 46 Study Committee. So you have something, I believe that came out today, I think, didn't it Cindy? Was that the one that came?
Was it today?
I don't know.
It was yesterday.
Was it yesterday? See, even though I didn't write. It's a rip-roaring read and I, I hope that you took the time to go over it because there's actually a lot of stuff going on at the, at that committee level right now. So you'll see things detailed, there are three subcommittees that are, that are in play right now, one for Communications, one for Governance, and one for Finance. All I can tell you is amongst all those committee and subcommittee meetings, there's easily three or four meetings a week going on right now, so it's, there's a lot of work, so you'll hear more about that. And you'll see more communications coming out, both in written and online form soon, so I'll just leave it at that. I think the report kind of details pretty good what's been going on. Principals' Report is included in your, in your handouts. Greg, is there anything note that you want to make us aware of or?
It's a pleasure to share all those.
Yeah.
Especially so early in the year. One of the things we started as a leadership team is to create a document, a Google Doc that we just share, that we all have access to, so when we hear these things in the hallway and see the emails, we just pile them on the Doc, so we don't forget things. There's a lot going on, so that was exciting and a pleasure to share. One update I would add to the communication piece that I don't think I included, and that is that we're investigating, oh, I didn't mention it, the, the potential idea of a smartphone app for Williston School District.
Cool.
We are sort of hearing from one vendor, they're putting a proposal that's surprisingly, surprisingly inexpensive for the functionality we could get, so we're looking into it, me and Bonnie Birds all in, and Administration.
Good, good. Keep us up to date, that sounds.
Any questions about the report?
I had a couple of things.
Yes.
For Sharon's report, there, what Sharon Davison is doing, I wondered if at some point it would be appropriate for her to present to us, like what she's going to talk about in a national setting about our schools, I mean, I don't know. Or if we look at her, if she has a presentation she's doing, but I mean, she's specifically going to talk about Common Core and Assessments and sort of what the nature of that might be on a national setting. That may not be appropriate, but I just, you know, it's a wonderful opportunity for her and just to hear.
Good idea.
And for us.
Yeah, that was one question. And then on the W, the Williston School Safety Team, I didn't know if there was any consideration of ever having school parent representatives on that committee, or if it's not appropriate.
I would say it is appropriate. We actually talked about it at our first meeting, I did have a parent representative at Charla.
Okay.
We're just getting traction with expanding the team, so we're going to be looking further out.
Okay, okay. I think that was it.
The other possibility with your comment, your question about Sharon, if the Board is agreeable, I could have a write a summary to embed in my, in the Principals' Report.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
That'd be helpful, yeah.
Okay.
Reports to the Board, 5 dot 3, Operations and Maintenance, so this was included in your handout also. The intent, I think the intent of delivering this right now is intentional, it's something we want to have in front of us and understand as we're going into budget season. For us, it has a particular significance because at the same time, we have the Facilities Subcommittee that's looking at some of these things and, you know, in the bigger picture too, so we may have a discussion as we go into budget season about, you know, this, this is a strategic plan and it's something we need to have, but some of these things, it may make sense to do as part of the other project that may be proposed. There's pros and cons and we can get into that, you know, I think over budget sessions.
The only thing that I would say, and I appreciate putting this together, because there is a lot, is I think part of what I at least would have liked to have seen is what we already did. So unless I didn't understand this report, but it seems as though we have everything that's planned for this year, plus what's the future, but not what we already did.
So in this, on the September, in the September packet.
Oh, sorry then.
That was, under every Board's request, that was prepared, so that, you'll find that in the September materials.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
After reviewing them, if you have any questions, let me know.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
I don't know if this is an appropriate time for a question, but Kevin, is there anything you'd like to share as far as maybe the process of the Facilities Committee and how that will start rolling?
Yep, I got, I got the last report, I'll talk a little bit about that before we go into discussion.
Okay.
But it does match up with this, that's why I mentioned it. Any other questions on the three or five-year plan?
No.
Good, yeah. Yeah, thanks Lyle and the team, you guys for putting that together and me John. CSU debrief, I think the one thing I took out of it is we had a pretty interesting discussion, interesting is always a good word to use, about the allowable, are we putting it, I don't want to say caps, but that's really what it is. Allowable, yeah, the allowable growth percentage that we're going to be allowed to grow our budget per, you know, laws that were passed last year. And it's going to make our budget process painful, because we're going to be looking at about, about 2.3.
2.31.
Percent.
And the consequence, if I understand it, is that if we want to propose a budget in excess of that, we'll have to, that'll have to be a separate line item on town meeting vote. So there's a lot of disincentive.
And the cost you pay in extra tax to go above that is, what, like 50 cents on double, it's like double basically.
Significant.
You pay a dollar for every dollar you're spending.
Put the principal on there, say we want to have a principal. Get extra line item. Everybody agree with that, right Greg?
Okay, you're sitting next to him. So.
Yeah, that sounds tricky.
Yeah, so you know, we're going to see our baseline budget numbers come out and then we're going to have the challenge just starting out of this chute, so. So be noted, that's, that was, so that was the discussion that I took out of the CSSU debrief. What about you, was there other items that you wanted to talk about?
Well, just as a corollary to that, which is, has to do with CY. So.
Yeah.
There was a presentation about what our CSSU budget will include, and I think there were Board members, I don't know if it was me, but there were certain folks who said, "CSSU, please come in with a budget that is consistent with these limitations on growth." And some of the specific areas that we can choose that may have impacts are these services, some of which we really have no choice, which is IT, food, ELL services, things of that nature. And there was a discussion about whether CY was up for grabs.
Yep, so let's talk about just a little bit more, because we actually have it for discussion.
Okay.
Because it's, this is why we have it for discussion.
Do you perceive us making cuts to programs?
I, I don't know if I perceive it, but I think the reality is, is we need to be prepared to review, to be ready to review.
Yeah, well.
All of our options.
The forums will be especially important this year.
Yes, yes.
But we also have good administrators who have addressed these complications before and hopefully will give us options to consider.
Do you have a point Cindy?
Yeah, I, I think it would be very early to state that there was, there's, there might be costs. We're just starting the process, we have a limitation of 2.31 as growth and that's where we leave it today, I think.
No, I don't think it would come necessarily.
So Cindy, do you have a question?
The first version of the CSSU budget will be our version of the baseline, but yes, we've already started those conversations of where we're going to help meet the percentage goals. But the first one, I don't expect will come in any lower than anybody else's baseline, given the assumptions. But yes, we'll have our own decision packets to bring to the Board about what, or not even decision packets, I think I just called them recommended reductions.
Yeah. So we'll get into that just a little bit more in the, in discussion, just a couple more reports. Program Council, I know that they have met.
Yeah, so Chris Siderchlatton was here to present, well, here to report out. I sent them home, he's a young family, I sent them home at 8:15. But I have some notes here and.
Great.
Of course, I'm present at all the Program Council meetings.
Please pass on our apologies to me.
Let me just bring it up for email a half minute. Okay, so first thing that we wanted to let you know is that every year, there's a rotation of representation. So the idea is we want to bring new perspectives in, mix them with the folks who are seasoned. Every two or three years, a Program Council member is expected to kind of step away and allow space for someone else. So there's a training done for those new members, for, that Chris and Kathy Gray do and it's the idea is to really help them understand their role and, and, on Program Council. So we, last year, the Board probably heard about works, a work of the Program Council around how can the Administration, how can be supportive of initiatives that come around. Big things that involve a large amount of work over a large, over a big span of time and that, you know, like, you know, best practices in mathematics, or the new Lucy Cawkins writing curriculum, when we updated to the new bridges, so things like that. And what are the kinds of things that are supportive to teachers and staff when those new things come about? So there was a good amount of work done about things that could happen before the initiative, things that happened during the initiative, and things that can happen after the initiative. So as a result of that work, the Administration now is kind of taking the distillation the Program Council provided about what are those things, and we're creating a guidance document that says, this is, this is what we believe about how to support initiatives at Williston School District. So we're doing that, that'll be presented back to the Program Council at a later meeting. Next big thing of the first meeting was the selection of topics. So everybody on the Program Council can bring, is expected to bring topics from their constituency for consideration and voting on. So at that meeting, the person representing their constituency had already shared the topic on a document, so they're given the opportunity to speak to it for a couple of minutes. And every, like, we go around the room and everybody has a chance to do that, and then there's voting that occurs. So you couldn't possibly tackle all that, all those topics. So, and the Administration can bring a topic for focus and that's not voted on, that's just, that just happens. So the Administration brought the topic of an MTS, a study and analysis of our MTSS systems and structures. So you've heard, you've heard a lot about MTSS over the last year or so from Megan, and basically, we proposed that we really dig into all our systems and structures at WCS, at, at WSD, that support our most fragile kids and really Tier 1, 2, and 3, and how they all work together and how we might make them even better. So, and then of the other topics brought by Representatives, after the voting, three topics rose to the top. A review of the student placement process, so the, the process of placing students from one team to the next. Student access to Tier 2 supports. So the idea is, it's not just that we need to identify which kids would benefit from support, and then identify what the targeted support is, but how do we help them get at that support without pulling them away from important Tier 1 instruction? And what points of the day can we get them what they need without undermining the Tier 1? So that's something we'll tangle with. And then, parent-teacher conferences, just discussion about what expectations are around parent-teacher conferences, what are best practices, how that relates to how, what we're providing in terms of time. Those are the three topics. And that's pretty much it. Chris wanted me to mention that if anybody, that you all have access to the Program Council website, it's been shared with you. I asked him Karen to share the link with you via email, so he'll do that. And you can go on there at any time and email Chris or Kathy or me if you have any questions about Program Council.
Excellent.
Could you just circulate that, that link to all of us?
Sure.
That'd be great, sure.
Great, thank you. So that leaves, reports to the Board, the Facilities Committee, so.
FAP.
Oh geez, I do this every time, don't I?
You're skipping it.
Well, it's not on here.
Huh? It's not on?
FAPAC, it's right in front of you, see?
It's all capital letters.
Yeah, it's all capital letters.
It's like, reverse dyslexia.
So this is our, or whatever, organization, so one of the major fundraising avenues that FAP is using now is the annual fund, and so that's where families have an option to give X amount of dollars for the year to cover field trips largely. And that's at a little over $10,000 right now, which needs to be at like $35,000 or $40,000, so there needs to be some work there. There are two upcoming fundraisers that FAP has, one is the Craft Show, which I have little flyers for everybody, just to have it on your calendars. And the second one is the Book Fair, the Scholastic Book Fair. Both of those events occur at Williston Central School in November. And then, the other big action at FAP's last meeting was approving 13 grant requests totaling about $7,500. And this is educational improvement, initiatives for the classroom of different types of things. I can have a chart I can circulate, but there's an artist-in-resident, books for the classroom library, a set of snowshoes for Allen Brook School, because Williston Central School has those, but Allen Brook School did not, so. And some materials for Integrated Steam Light Project, so No Strings Marionette Performance and some computer coding materials, so mix of classroom, art, the art programs and some of the other related arts teachers submitted, so. You know, it felt like, Greg was there, it felt like with the $7,500, a lot of things were covered and they partially funded some, so I thought it was, and there may be an opportunity to do other grants, so.
So just thanks to the hard work for the FAP volunteers, that's a really important compliment to what we all do and.
Right.
Absolutely. Karen, does the FAP, does the Council have a, like a working agenda that they, are there things that they address throughout the year, or is it a little more tactical?
It's not like ours where there's a certain topic every month, but.
I ask in the context of, I think that there's going to be.
The Act 46 work.
Yeah, and the facilities work too.
Yeah.
I think that there's some things we want to gather, you know, want to inform the FAP about, FAPAC about, and get their input.
Well, and I think there, you know, just following up on the Program Council initiatives, I think a few years ago, there was a look at student placement and there was a significant event, an evening event that FAP coordinated where, you know, and Walter facilitated about student placement and getting parents' input. And so there are certainly opportunities like that, where looking at the facilities and maybe, you know, showing a report and different things.
Well, and since they meet, they meet once a month, right?
Once a month.
So we are, we always have a space there, so whatever we want to present, we just come up.
Yeah, I just want to be respectful of their time too, so make sure we coordinate it, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, if we needed more time than just a standard five to 10-minute report, you know, there's certainly, we can email the Chair and say, you know, we'd like to present ABC topic and.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll talk to you and Shawnee offline.
Okay.
Because it's, we're coming up quick on some stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
And I did the plug for Budget Buddies again.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get there. Okay, Facilities Committee, make sure I didn't miss anybody. So, so in your, in your package, you'll see a report out that was authored by our Architect Team. So there's been a lot of work that's, that's gone on up to this point. Basically, what, what has happened up to this point is that the survey that we asked the, the team to do has been conducted. It's been conducted by the Architecture Team and by our contractors, our Electrical, our Plumbing, our HVAC, they all work together and they came up with this report that you see in front of you. So this report details all of their findings, all of the things that they, that they see that could be addressed, need to be addressed.
Well, can I just correct that? It's an executive summary and we just see a one-pager that the summary.
And I'm going to.
Okay, alright, that's what.
You're leading right into.
Yeah.
Yep, where I'm going.
Okay.
So, so the reason you have the high-level summary here right now is because the, the second level of work is beginning, which is to start costing and prioritizing these items. And so there's a, there's a deeper report that goes into the detail underneath each one of these items. But the Committee didn't feel it was, it was appropriate really to bring it to you with any, any more information than this at this time, because it would, it really wouldn't have any context, you wouldn't, you know, we don't have it yet as the Subcommittee. So that's the work that's going on now, the teams are doing that work, and I think the intention is, I think the intention is next month, we're going to come with a more detailed report with the Architect Team to present here and start to give more and more context around the findings and the costs and the priorities and open it up to a little bit of Q and A and input. We're holding, actually, we're holding a forum on Thursday night for input, surprise. Yeah, that's the Subcommittee, it's, it's in there.
Yeah.
This Thursday? Uh huh. So I, I.
What time is that at?
It's at 6:30. 6:30, in the dining room, I believe, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And I know it's been in the school, well, I threw it out on our Facebook page and actually a couple hundred people saw it, so. Yeah, I think we've informed as much as we can, given the time that we have, and we'll get what input we can. But that's part just, there's going to be other opportunities, like we're talking about, we're going to get other, other places to go for the input too. Okay, so, any questions on that?
No, thank you very much for doing that.
Great, thank you. Discussion matters, 6 dot 1, budget. So now, let's talk about the purchase services. Josh, I invite you to continue the discussion, because you were right on.
Uh, thank you. So, we purchase services from the CSSU ranging from.
IT, CY, food, ELL, and ELP, right?
Yes, and so, for, my impression is for a large part, a lot of these, if not all of them, are really essential. But one could argue, at least with CY, and I will be the first to acknowledge what a great job that they do, and they provide an essential service dealing with prevention with at-risk youth, and we have an obligation to fulfill that, that need in our community. But what was presented to us at the CSSU Board Meeting was, to the extent we need to exercise discretion and make tough choices, and if CY happens to be one of them, that we need to make that decision sooner rather than later, because there's a cascading effect on the other districts, because we all share resources. So what, I think my, if, I'm channeling Bob for a moment, that if there was X savings that we thought we could achieve, because we just decided to get rid of CY, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but if we did that, we might not achieve them because, because of the shared resource component. So I guess Bob was encouraging us to make a decision tonight.
Well, we're, it's only for discussion today, it's on discussion.
Or to give him a weather report.
We can give him a weather report.
I, I opined, or I commented that we weren't going to be in a, I wasn't going to be in a position to make a recommendation.
You were or not?
We're not, because we don't have enough information.
Thank you, that's what I was going to say. How, how do we know when we don't know what the potential savings or lack of savings will be?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I think this, out of this, I think Josh has it right, CY is, is unfortunately the, the one of these that I think is, that we need to look at, look at the options a little differently. The other ones, in my opinion, we, you know, we contract for them, but we don't necessar, we, we still have, there's still an amount of discretion we can, you know, like, when we say we're going to take IT services from the central office, from CSSU, it doesn't necessarily mean we're taking all of, you know what I mean, we, you know, there's things that we contract for them to do on our behalf. CY is a little bit different, because it, it provides services that if we don't use CY, arguably, it'll have to be provided through other methods that come from the SU that will be, that we'll have to spend our money on too. So the analysis and the, the amount of savings, the amount of money we might perceive we would not spend may not be equally think it is, to justice point.
Nice, a question about the IT side of it. The equipment side of technology for our schools, that's mentioned as one of the items that's part of that purchase service, what is that? Is that the computer in my, that my daughter has in her classroom, or?
It's, it's the computers and networking equipment.
So all that is now part of the CSSU budget, because I didn't think it was.
Not quite.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a bit of a, yeah, okay, so there's a bit of a, two parts to this. There's services provided and then beyond those services, much like some of the other things, we have a budget that we could choose to use for specific projects. You have an IT line item, I believe, that's.
Most of the hardware in the school, most of the hardware that's students touch, that's all local budget.
That's what I.
I apologize.
Okay.
So. At what extent, we have a network administrator who assists managing the D-CAD data.
Well, that's what I, I was just was wondering about, because, you know, as our student population falls, you know, clearly the equipment side, you know, you wouldn't need as many computers, because you don't have as many students as you have.
Right, your refresh would be less, your.
Right, so therefore you can't just say, let's increase that line item 5% when your population is dropping, you don't want to just automatically increase that and have more money to spend on fewer computers, so.
Equipment is always the same as the year prior.
We don't add any percent increase in that area, and often it's a subjective decision packets to make those changes, so that's where you'd see that. And if a Board has said it's a one-time decision packet, it's also not in the baseline. I don't think you guys have any of those types in your baseline this year. But the SU budget is the maintenance of the server, the licenses for the software, and the technician, technical staff.
Okay, so this equipment is really the infrastructure equipment?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
What was our CY line item budget last year? Like, how much, how much for the CY program?
It's different for Williston, because we contribute extra above and beyond the assessed services, so it's another thing to remember. I think we contribute another $70,000 on top of, I want to say 39 or 40, but I'm just pulling it out of here, so don't take my word. And I think we contribute another seventy thousand on top of, I wanna say thirty-nine or forty, but I'm just pulling it out of here, so don't take my word.
The assessment is based on the total budget and then ADM to allocate the cost. And then to Kevin's point, you, you also have chosen locally to invest, I believe, more in the mentoring program specifically.
Yeah, so we'll see that in our baselines.
We've done that for food services too.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Any other, uh, discussion on purchase services?
I have a question about one of the ELP points, which was costs locally will increase with statewide mandated tuition rate. That was on Bob's. Um, so. I, I, my question was, why would costs increase and not, and revenues would increase too, right? Because don't we get a?
So we'll get, um, see if I can do this one. So the state determines what the amount of money being paid to parents will be. We, we don't set that rate. So they'll tell us how much we have to pay. The ADM value of a student, of an equalized per pupil. Is also set by the state.
Right.
So, they may or may not equal each other.
Well, usually, yeah, they don't.
Hopefully, they will, yeah.
They don't necessarily equal each other. There's usually more of an advantage to the school and the school makes out a little bit. That's why I was curious about this being here, because the costs. It shouldn't be an additional cost item for the school district. I, I.
Well, there will be, because there'll be whatever your new, um, adjusted equalized pupil rate will be determined. I don't think we have that until December.
Yeah, true.
Um, usually. Um, and then I don't know when they set the rate for ELP, so. Yeah, ELP. Um, so they'll, once we have those, he'll update those numbers. But I think he's assuming the state will raise the number, the amount of the tuition paid to families. And if you're a school with declining enrollment, even though you got to count those kids, you may see this, so.
But you'd still get the.
You still get the value, you still get to count them.
And you get the ADM rate, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I just was curious, because there should have been a revenue part of that too.
That, and that'll be on your revenue page of your budget.
That was my.
The hope is they offset each other.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, budget form preparation. So we're gonna, we have an action. We have an action later on.
It's on the back of, um, the one pager on the, from the Act forty-six study committee. The action requested of local district boards.
Right, to schedule.
Oh, yeah, I have it. Uh, I, uh. Wait a minute. Yeah, so, um. We may or may not choose to take action on it, but the, the intent here was, uh. So we have to talk about just our own preparation for our own budget form. But the, the request from the Act forty-six committee in this context is that. If all the boards are meeting in all the towns to do their budget forms, it kind of made sense to ask the boards that were doing that. If the Act forty-six committee could tail on and have their input meeting the same evening. But we didn't wanna just say, oh, we know your schedule, so we're gonna do it. We wanted to, you know, come back to the you as the board and say, are you okay with this? Because, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna ask, you know, we're gonna ask you to, just to tag on. And we didn't want you to think that we were taking advantage of it. Uh, we wanted to make sure that it was, you know, it's clear, cut. That there's a budget forum meeting that's specific to the local town. And then there's gonna be an Act forty-six committee input request, you know, to take from this, hopefully the same people that are there.
Well, and I think one of the thoughts we had was that, um, the questions might come up during the budget forum. Questions about Act forty-six, so if we had something right afterwards to say, you know, we're, well, let's write that question down. And we can address that, you know, in the second hour of our evening or however long. Just because tho- those questions, because Act forty-six is a budget issue too. That they make those questions about the act might come up during the budget forum.
So is the presentation at the Act forty-six meeting, assuming there is one. Going to be more procedural as opposed to substantive?
It, it's, yeah, it's gonna be more informational than anything else.
But what is, what is the information being presented? Is it about the process? Uh, or will the committee at that point have, um, an outline of the substantive recommendations that they're gonna be making?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so.
It's gonna be, um, we hope to have the frequently asked questions, um, available as a handout. You know, like, however many there might be, ten, fifteen frequently asked questions with some answers. And they're generally, what is the law, you know, what, and it's sort of just, just the facts really, um, to get the information out there. And then to have, um, pieces of paper out there, uh, for people attending to write their question down. Or just have a flip chart and write questions. And it's, it's sort of more an informational kind of thing, like the.
So.
I, I think of it being like, um, the I, the iPad, um, Williston meeting that time where.
Well, in a good way.
In a good way, of just collecting, but of just collecting, the, the, collecting concerns, collecting hearing. You know, and, and, and who knows how many people will be there, but.
So.
I, I just wanna ask, um, ask. So, I might be totally wrong. But I think point one percent of our town, taking out wild guess, even knows about this act. And what it actually means. So, is the plan to actually say, this is why we are talking about this? And then just open up for questions? Is that it?
That's basically.
To introduce what it means?
Absolutely.
The intention is that.
So educational plus.
Plus taking any questions, concerns.
Okay.
A- and I think the intention is that later on in the process, when we have more information and perhaps a recommendation, we will do another. You know, public forum, you know, to, to communicate.
I think that's important because.
Substantive, substantive information for discussion. Yeah.
What are the timelines of Act forty-six? Or maybe I should just wait until after the budget meeting and I can ask that question? Oh, wait, never mind.
Well, certainly if we wanna take full advantage of the tax benefits, which for this year would be ten cents off the tax rate. We, our community, all our communities in the CSSU would have to vote.
It wouldn't come for another year though.
But to get the ten cent.
In, in year one.
In year one. Uh, we would have to vote affirmatively by June thirtieth.
Right.
And then if we miss that, it doesn't mean we can't go back, but the next best would be eight cents. It's a ten, eight, six, four, two.
So we have some time.
No.
There's so much to do.
There's, it's, it's a huge.
It's a very tight, tight timeframe.
There's lots of complexity.
Because we actually have to have a, in order for the timeline to work out, because the state gets a say in what we as the committee put forward. So they need timing. We have to like, pretty much have it wrapped up and out the end of the year. Well, no, I mean, our, December, right?
By December, we have to have a recommendation.
It needs to be the state board for their April meeting. And they need advance notice that they're gonna put it on their agenda.
Yeah, so. So to bring it back around, uh, you know, the discussion item really, uh, we shouldn't lose fact, lose track of the matter. Which is that we as a board have our own local budget forum we need to talk about. I don't, it's up to you guys whether we need to formally take an action or not. But I wanted to at least understand if everyone was comfortable with the committee coming and using that time afterwards to.
I think it's very smart. I mean.
Okay.
It's a no brainer.
Okay, great. Uh, so let's just talk about our own, uh, commi- our own work. We gotta do some communications to make sure people know we're doing it. Uh, I think we've, uh, had a pretty good process in the past that we've used when we do get input. We've usually done the flipboards and framed it around a couple of questions, you know, what's important. We have, we have like a set of five questions we've used in the past. I've gotta go look them up. Do you remember that?
Yeah, although I'm, I'm, I feel like.
You're talking about your budget forum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember, what is it now, five, six years ago, when the governor gave this challenge.
Challenge for change.
Challenge for change. And I almost feel like we're revisiting that same dynamic whereby, except this time it's mandatory, right? It was aspirational the first time.
More challenged.
Uh, now we've got a, uh, uh, an amount that we've got to, um.
There was a pretty big stick on it the last time too, though. It wasn't, it wasn't quite aspirational. So if we, if the whole state didn't stay under the certain amount, then there was some penalty that kicked in. You know what I mean? So it wasn't put on us individually. Here's your particular goal, but as a whole state, if we didn't stay under three percent. Then all of a sudden, some other thing kicked in. I can't remember what, because then we got the Obama money that kind of bailed everybody out in the end. Um, but we went through A to Z, the whole process at the time. I think it would make sense at your budget forums to explain the allowable growth percentage, how that works. And actually do a very similar kind of, you know, metric like we had done last time. Here's where you start with your FY sixteen per pupil expense. And at the other end, here is this number, what, two point one six for you guys?
Two point three.
One.
One.
Two point three one.
And we'll take every one of them.
And all the boxes in between and what those boxes do to that two point three one. And then say to people, so, what do you really value? I think the questions you're thinking about are like, what do you really value? What are the things that, um, you're wondering, could we do it a different way? Because really, you're just getting input. You're not trying to lead them to anything. You're just saying, what is it you really care about? When we're, because we're gonna be facing, they'll get it after they see the allowable growth percentage. We're facing a really tough budget year. What is it that, where are your values? What is it you wanna make sure? Because we're gonna be looking at everything.
And is that done at every single forum, not just the community one, but the two staff ones too, the same presentation?
Yeah, so I don't know, because you're the only one really that does staff ones. That hasn't happened in other schools. It, it started out in Shelburne, they haven't continued it though, but I, I think it would make sense to do that.
We have those posted boards, when teachers come by and they write down.
Are you asking, would we do the, um, allow, allowable growth percentage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same issue.
I think it's important.
I, I shared it with the association last week.
Yeah, I think our faculty need to know.
Yeah.
And all the people who, Cindy's been involved in this now for the last two weeks, uh, as we've been doing the, um, service planning.
So, our budget forum is scheduled for the tenth of November, if I recall.
I think it's the twelve.
It's the if of November.
So the AV, the ABS is scheduled for the tenth of November in the morning at seven fifteen. WCS is at Novem- November twelfth at three o'clock. And, uh, that evening, November twelve, at six, is the community budget forum.
So, um, should I say the twelfth?
Twelfth is the evening one.
So, Greg and Elena, I, I think we need help, uh, telling our story. You know, that, that introductory piece you just.
That's what I'm just writing down for board chairs.
Because I suspect you're gonna get the same request from more than us. And, uh, then it's just a matter of logistics, having the boards ready and having the questions pre-written on, on the whiteboards and. And we hold them, we hold the forums.
And would there, will there be any mention of the facilities study committee at this public hearing?
Oh, what a tangled web we weave.
I mean, I, I know we're gonna do, we talked about doing something separate for the facilities committee, but it seems to me you gotta have some.
Because you may have a bond. I mean, I think it's important to.
I'd hate for us to be accused of that.
And that's part of the values conversation too.
Right.
You've only got this much money. Where is it that you're spending?
Well, we have.
In order to spend it there. Cause there's not enough money.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just chewing on the context that we presented, because we don't have a lot of information that we can.
Or even just to say, passing, this will be brought up at another date. I, I just think some.
Well, it, it, you know, the public is becoming aware of it because we're going to do this forum and, and so we've made some communication. So I think it's, it is relevant that we, you know, that we somehow include it in the discussion. But I, I, in a sense, I almost don't wanna skew the, the input, because like you said, it goes, kinda goes to the values, so.
But it's awareness.
It is awareness, but from a budgetary process, it may in effect be kind of separate. If we bond, it's not necessarily. I don't, I don't.
It's part of the education process.
It's part of the education process.
Well, the difference with a bond is that you're on the hook one year out, right? So if you imagine that you're gonna be in a better place in another year because of whatever, you know, the legislature's gonna all of a sudden find a money tree. Or we consolidate and we find a lot of efficiencies, or a lot more kids move to Williston. So you have a greater number of pupils, whatever it is that you might be imagining, then you could say, hmm, we could take a chance on that. Or you had a bond, retiring a bond. I don't know, maybe you do.
We do.
Right. So I mean, that's all the stuff that you wanna put on the page to say, okay, what kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it can be done without detracting from the girls.
Right, that's, that was, that was what I was trying to say, yeah. Okay.
Can I just ask a clarification? Because, um, this shows that, like, the ABS faculty budget forum is in the ABS conference room. And then the other two are in the WCS library. Is that where you usually do the community forum? So we don't ever use the auditorium?
No.
Okay.
There's usually not.
I know, I know.
One little logistical thing.
But we did ask for the book fair to stay open that night. And so just making sure, you know, so that.
Oh, because the book fair's in the dining room?
Right. Yeah, we asked them to, um, stay up until eight so that maybe we. Get more of a draw. So we're gonna have to have like a placard in the lobby to say, buy your book and then come down here.
If you have a lot of people, that library's not a great space.
No, it's not, no.
I thought we reserved the, um, music room.
Let's check.
So just to be thinking about it. In, in a way, like the Swit Kiva would be about it, or maybe it has to be about that.
Yeah, cause yeah, that's actually, yeah, I, people can wander in, give it input and wander out. Um, okay. I know in the past, uh, in, on the ABS morning meetings, we've provided coffee and bagels. So, does anybody, and we also need to staff it. Like, one of us needs to be at each of these at minimum.
I can offer to be in the afternoon, not in the morning.
Okay.
Which, which day is it?
Uh, the tenth for the morning, right? And twelfth for the afternoon and evening?
I mean, I, I was gonna be at the evening on the twelfth. I could probably be at all three. I've never been at them before, so I'd be interested in.
Yeah, we have to, you have to be at the one in the evening.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, um, I'll email around just some of the logistics, make sure we got everything covered, ask you guys to respond on that. Otherwise, I think we're good here.
Would you like me to check on that location?
I would.
And if it is in the music room, which is the voc- the coral music room, would you prefer it in a Kiva, if that can be arranged?
I think the music room's okay, because it's close by to the book fair.
It's big and open and you could set up things. It's, yeah, you don't have all, all the distractions that the library has.
Yep. Uh, that leads into Budget Buddies. So I know we have, I know we have a couple at least, right Sandy? Yeah, I think we might only have two identified so far. Uh, I have a couple more people I can reach out to, but if you guys can think of anyone else, please, uh, in the next. Like this week, you know, reach out to them so we can schedule a time.
Ask your Budget Buddies to attend the Common Core presentation in November, because that will be this whole special ed budget. And that's not a insignificant part of your budget, but it's determined at the SU now. So the whole Common Core presentation next time is the special ed budget.
You mean the, but the core budget?
The common topic, did I say?
You've learned about three things, but.
Comment topic. In November will be the special.
My mind's so addled right now, I understood.
I know.
Good, thank you.
I was going, I think I understand what she's saying.
Okay. So, you, we've usually been pretty good and gotten four or five at minimum. I'd like to have at least four or five, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So you're gonna, you have a couple more, you have someone, is that, and then you said we are.
I have a couple more I can think of, right, that I can reach out to and see if they can participate.
Cause I don't think we've done any, I mean, other than it, it being in the minutes from an FAP meeting that have gone out to all families. We haven't done any other communication in the observer or in the school bell about the need for Budget Buddies, to the best of my knowledge, so.
That would probably be a good thing to do.
We should totally do, uh, Facebook, right?
Yep.
Both on, can we do it on?
Well, if it gets in the bell, it's post, the bell is posted on the Facebook page.
Is it in the bell?
The deadline for the bell for this week would be noon tomorrow.
Can we squeeze it in?
If someone writes a blurb, I can get it to, I can get it to Cindy Pavlik. I could tell her in the morning it's coming.
All right, I'll write it.
But you were writing something anyway for the observant.
So, so here's the deal, it's, it's gonna be really elegant. Yo, what do you, what's up? Get yourself over here to this budget thing. I got, I, I, yeah, 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 okay. Budget Buddies, we're good? Budget Buddies, we're good? We're okay, we'll be good.
We're working on it.
Yeah. Okay, six dot two, policy, discussion on duty of care to, duty of care to students and pupil privacy rights.
Should be known. Totally facetious, totally facetious.
I just asked, man, that's all right. That's why, I already bundled them. Kevin, from your standpoint, anything we need to know, be aware of?
I don't know, I thought these were all pretty straightforward. But yeah, the students have some rights, Josh.
Well, both are mandatory.
One is mandatory, the other is, duty of care is actually essentially a regurgitation of state statute. But it's not, you're not technically required to have one, but it doesn't hurt.
You have to act reasonably.
Yeah.
In the safety and care of children.
So, are we good on the policies for the discussion?
I mean, just what I, I'm having a hard time reading it on my computer. But the pupil privacy, a lot of, was that a lot of that about the surveys?
Oh, it tends to fall in that indirect, wait, this isn't.
Is that the one?
Two, sometimes I remember if this was the directory information one, or if that's the one that's going back next one. It's largely based on federal law.
Right, and about the ser, I mean, I think some of the language I remember reading was about the surveys, which I know was a very controversial topic in Williston last February, March, over the.
I mean, there's an opt-out process.
Behavior survey, so.
Oh, right.
Oh.
Yeah, there's an opt-out process.
Right, but making sure that's communicated.
But I believe this goes in all the handbooks.
It can't be a default one.
Right, right. I believe it's in all the student handbooks. I think we include this policy in student handbooks, but I don't want to assume that.
I think that's interesting what she just said. She means, she thinks that it shouldn't be a passive consent.
There are certain ones that aren't supposed to be a passive consent.
This, ours is based on the SBA, so I would expect that it's, it's your minimum expectations to meet the law. But we can certainly, Kevin and I can bring that to the committee to make sure that.
Good question. Okay. Good. Six dot three, communications boards corner. I'm going to make this easy. And I'm going to throw my sword right out there and fall on it, because I didn't do the last one, the get Budget Buddies. So, I'll take this one, I'm going to, I'm going to.
You have a deadline?
Going to do it tomorrow. That's because I'm, and I'm going to, I'm going to do a call for Budget Buddies. But I'm also going to communicate the budget forum, and when it is, and a little, a little bit on the Act forty-six, because I think there'll be more coming from that committee, but I'll.
Great.
I'll get it into our 200 words or less, and then I'll call Stephanie and hopefully, and send her to get it out there next week. Because we'll miss this week's deadline, but we'll get it out for next Thursday.
And then to Cindy for that.
Yeah, to Cindy for the bill, yep. And I do have that here too. So, I will write that once, send it twice.
Thank you.
Okay. I do want to, I should have said this before, but I do want to add one other discussion item. And that is that Jevana informed me today that she doesn't have the time to continue as a CSSU board member. And after talking with her, she was okay with me bringing this up now. So, just for discussion right now, we need to fill her position. It has to be from someone here on the board. So, I would love for someone to jump up and down right now and volunteer, and we can have a nice seamless transition and not have to get together again, but.
Just one at a time, though.
We do have until next month to fill the position, so.
And I apologize, I just cannot responsibly take that on.
Again, as I told you privately, I totally understand. So, I'm glad that you stepped up and said you couldn't, so.
I'm okay with doing it, because I've been, just as I'm new this year, I've been trying to attend most of it anyway to learn a lot about. And plus, being on the Act forty-six, I wanted to hear what the discussion is. But, you know, once we get past our March election and whatever, the two people whose positions are up, whatever happens, I'd be willing to consider letting someone else.
I think that's a reasonable expectation.
Thank you very much.
Unless you really want it, Kevin.
No, 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 no.
So, do we need to, in order to do this, do we need to take an action?
How?
Yes.
I would think we do, right?
I believe you usually do this at the reorganization meeting. I don't think the board chair can just appoint in this particular case.
So, if I may suggest, maybe the chair accepts the resignation, and then we can make a motion.
Okay.
For reappointment.
Okay. And we're coming right up on actions now, right? So, why don't we just make this the new seven dot one? You guys can figure out from there.
I think you want to make it seven dot three.
Okay.
Just because if anybody's reading the notes and they're expecting to read about need of absence. Right. Leave the, leave the ones that have already been submitted to the world as they are.
Exhibit A, I actually wrote that down, seven dot three. So, let's make it seven dot three. So, hold on a thought.
We can take it up now.
Yeah, well, I, yeah. Fine, so let's take a motion for seven dot three. So, as the board chair, I've accepted Jevana's resignation from the CSSU board. Given that, can I have a motion to appoint Karen McLeod as our representative, as our other representative to the CSSU board?
Sure.
A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You can't say no. No abstentions?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Karen, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, seven dot one, we're going to pull out into executive session. And so, that just leaves us with seven dot two, level three field trips. So, I think at this point, why don't I, just to keep it all clear, clean, and we can amend later if we need to, or whatever, can I have a motion to approve the level three field trips from Harbor, Swift, and what's the third one you're asking?
Voyager, that's coming around there.
Yeah, so can I have, so can I have a motion to approve the level three field trip requests from Harbor, Swift? And I'm sorry, once again?
Voyager.
Voyager.
Sure.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Great. Let's discuss.
Can we have a moment just to review that?
Yeah.
So, this would just, can I ask questions?
Might as well, I guess.
It's not related to this, it's more about, so with this, we have three houses. We, so there's a house that hasn't submitted anything. Does that mean that they are not required, right?
Correct.
They raise their hands if they want to go ahead and do it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Are we at deadline for those other two houses? In our process?
It would just be one, seven, eight, one additional house. And we're looking into alternate arrangements for a trip being offered for those students.
I thought Full House hasn't submitted one, or they did?
They've not. Full has not submitted one and doesn't plan to.
Okay.
So, the administration is looking into other options.
Oh, is that what you just said and I didn't listen? Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, can I, go ahead. Well, there is a policy, from what I understand, that all, at least all students in, I don't know what the policy reads, Walter kept talking about the policy in the past, providing equitable access for all students to such a trip, a level three type of trip. And it's part of why I think this board in the past has approved a special stipend for that trip. And FAP provides a special type stipend for that trip. And I don't know if the administration provides another stipend beyond, and then the rest is all fundraising and parent contribution. So, so the fact that only three of the four are supporting it, I think is part of a bigger question.
Yes, and so, just without getting into a big discussion, it's actually procedure, not policy.
Okay.
That points to students having access, equitable access.
Okay.
And because the, taking on the endeavor of a field trip can't be required, there is this tension behind that reality, and then wanting to be able to provide these opportunities. So, that's what I meant by the administration exploring how to make this a level three opportunity available for Full House students this year. And we're, at the same time, evaluating how to make this ongoing and sustainable, because it's a difficult thing for teams to sustain.
Every year, every year.
I agree, I mean, I, you know, I was part of the Full House parent group last year when Full House didn't want to do it a year ago, for the last year's eighth graders. And this was a huge discussion. I continue, I mean, I don't know, as a parent, as a school, we're concerned about the equity of this particular trip in our schools. I don't feel that it's fair, and looking at the ones that we have now, that one group sends fifth through eighth graders, and the others only send eighth graders, or whatever they're sending. I feel like it should be a uniform approach for all. I don't know, do we financially give Swift House X amount of dollars for every child that goes on the trip? And if that's the case, then for four years, we're providing money for the same child to go fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth on a trip. And that applies for whatever FAP's doing and everything. I just, if, if this is a belief as a, as a school, that we, we believe that this educational opportunity is really important for our children to have, is it important for them to have four times, or just one time? And I see the educational piece that Swift House incorporates in, and there is value in that. I just don't know if there's value in that for four years, for them to do four different special projects for every grade they're in middle school. Isn't that, why wouldn't that value apply to every single fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grader? If we, as a school system, believe that all of our children should have equitable access to the same opportunities.
Plus, the trips often, every year are the same. D.C., New York.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice to see.
Trips are the same, kids are different.
Right, well.
Except for Swift House.
Except for Swift House.
That's the point.
Okay, yes.
Here's what gets really tricky, because I've been there, you were having this conversation back in nineteen ninety-eight. This very same conversation. And it's the fact that the teachers don't need to do this at all.
And I don't think they should.
And so, always when you get into this conversation, you're always like on, kind of like on the edge of the tightrope, you know, about like, you know, it really, I believe these are amazing opportunities for kids. Personally, I think it's a great opportunity for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and connected to learning standards and all of that. But teachers get excited about doing it, because they have a vision for how it's going to work. And so, they, they are willing to spend the extra time and the time away from their family, and I don't need to tell you. So, all the tightrope walk is.
That's not uniform across all the teachers, I don't think.
No, and I think that like, the more we're doing the tightrope walk, the more teachers call off the tightrope and say, you know what?
It's a lot of work for our teachers to have to go through and plan this.
And unless they can do it the way they want to, then they say it's not worth it for them.
And, and it's not even just the work. It's the, you know, granted, you know, X amount of dollars parents pay, and Y amount comes from these other sources. But then there's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of fundraisers that go on to try and provide support for these. And so, I don't know, I just feel like that taxes our community also.
So, what is the budgetary impact of these three trips? What are we committed to doing? Is it part of our existing budget?
We have a, if you remember, a few years ago, we added a line item for a small amount of money that pays a per-child stipend for the trips. And I think the line item is in the low, the low, well, well.
It's twenty dollars.
So, yeah, but I mean, the line item at the budget level is.
Do you perceive anyone coming to us for additional funds beyond what has been?
No.
Okay.
No, and the fundraising impact should be very similar to what it was last year, if not a little less, based on, depending on what happens with.
But the eighth graders in Full House, would, would they be afforded the opportunity to go on one of these other three trips?
That's not yet determined.
Because that's the way Walter explained the policy would be, is that if, if a particular house, or if, if like a student in one house wanted to go on a different trip, they'd be afforded that opportunity.
I think, I think that, yeah.
That's different than a whole, you're combining all lives.
Right.
And I think that, yeah, that's, I think that's part of the, that's part of the, that's how it's written right now. And that's, that may be appropriate for this particular situation. But as Greg's explaining, administration's trying to find, they're looking at options. And so, I, I've got to let them do that. The catch-22 here, and I think we were here last year too, or maybe the year before, is.
Every year.
Every year. And so, the catch-22 is, is at what point do we man, do we, I don't want to mandate, but do we change this such that this, this isn't a discussion item here anymore? But do we do that at the expense of the processes exists and these children's opportunities this year?
I would like to suggest that there be a committee that's formed of parents, students, and staff to strategize about the best way to approach this going forward, if this is a school policy that, and even a school board person too, or something. But I think it's, you know, a community decision perhaps, that might make, you know, so maybe this year is dealt with this way, but last year was supposed to be an interim year where we had the administration centralized planning, a lot of the logistics, and then the, the content of the trips was still organized by whoever the teachers were going on it, and they partnered up to go, so.
And that's how it worked, I thought.
That's how it worked last year. That was supposed to be an interim year with another, you know, I didn't know what was going to happen next.
And that centralized support is going to be continuous.
Right.
So, not, I think that's a great idea, not to belabor the discussion, but I'm really sensitive to what I think Greg said earlier about teachers wanting autonomy on what they do, because this is all volunteer time, and, and just, you know, we've got to be really careful with it, we don't push the faculty over the edge, and we have no trips unless we want to pay for them, pay for the faculty time, which we really aren't doing above and beyond these volunteer efforts.
I don't have a problem with the, the different houses going on different trips and doing their own thing, and feel like that adds a little bit of, you know, individuality to each house, you know? And it allows teachers to, you know, have some autonomy. If the teachers are not feeling forced or overburdened by this, you know, I'd feel comfortable, more comfortable knowing that. And that it's not just, well, we do this every year, so we're going to keep doing it, you know? So, I, you know, I'd seek input from leadership to make sure that that isn't an issue. The one concern I have, and I brought this up last year with the four-year trip, is not necessarily about inequity, but more it's about the, the age of the, of the lower house or the lower kids. I think, I wonder, you know, I don't know if it, logistically, it's impossible to not include the fifth graders, but, you know, it seems like those kids are pretty young. And, you know, we're taking a little bit of a risk, I think, when we have a fifth grader going out into this type of an environment, you know? And that's, that's, that's my only, my only concern.
So, can I give a suggestion, or possible path forward? So, I know in conversations with Greg, and what he's mentioned here, is that they're, they're looking at some options here. I guess what I would like to do is have an opportunity to have a further discussion with them one-on-one, and come back to the board if we think it's appropriate. And I think it's, it may be appropriate to charge a committee, a subcommittee at our next meeting. It's not appropriate for us to do it now. Given that, I would recommend we approve these.
We'll have to call the question.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I am abstaining.
So noted. Motion passes. Okay. Jevana, I'll go with you off on, I mean, I want to, I want to hear it.
Yeah.
All right. That gets us to, I think, our executive, our executive session, right? And then, are we done after that? Consent agenda, I always, every month, don't I? I get to this point tonight and I just want to go.
FAP, A P, and consent agenda.
You're a consent agenda man.
Yeah, and we can take a motion to approve the consent agenda as. Yeah, as presented, that's exactly what it. So, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any particular items?
Well, the other thing.
So, if you want to discuss anything on the consent agenda.
Oh, we should have.
You need to pull it out before. Because at the point you're, that's the whole purpose of a consent agenda. You just vote the whole thing. So, so this was the lesson, but, so I'm going to say, you can back it up and say, okay, is there anybody that wants to take anything out of the consent agenda? And then if Giovanna wants to take something out. It's sort of, I have a note about abstentions, too, because Joan Lennis, who was a legislator, because that just happened at CVU or at CSSU tonight, she said, mm, you can't do that. You cannot abstain unless you have, there's a conflict of interest, or something like that. You can walk out of the room, so no, you're not here for the vote, but you really, I don't know. So I'm, I just have a note to look to find out. I see your face, and I'm just interested.
I'm not sure you're prohibited from abstaining.
Really, yeah, okay.
I mean, I, I.
It's hard for me to imagine.
Well, and the only thing I was going to say is, you know, I wasn't here in the last meeting, so I can't approve the meeting. That's all.
I, I know, I abstained for.
Yeah, for other reasons.
For, for some more reasons.
And you would know, too. I'm going to let you and Joan decide it. I just told her I abstained in the right thing.
Yeah, go read your Robert's rules.
I was just thinking she might have some experience with that in the legislature.
To me, that's actually interesting. But the board members wasn't present at the last meeting, they can't really.
All you're doing is accepting.
Oh, you're accepting them.
Oh, okay, so then, then, good. They were good.
So I have a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Quickly, just, uh, let's go over next meeting dates, and then we'll adjourn to executive session. You can see there's a lot going on. We've got, we don't even have our local stuff on here, but we've got our November 10th and 12th, uh, budget stuff going on. Everything else is here for you to read and put on your calendars as appropriate.
Can I just mention, um, something that's not on this one, but is on, it will be on our next month's meeting, and that is December's, um, Carousel Meeting is actually the same night as the CVU concert.
December, there's no Carousel Meeting.
Oh, there isn't one?
No. There's a budget meeting.
Oh, maybe that's what it is, okay.
Which now you get to go to.
Well, I, my daughter's in the chorus concert here at CVU, so I don't.
Yep, gotcha.
Do you think that's more important than the budget?
It just depends on what time, is that usually at 5:30, the budget?
You know what, I just, we made a note, I sent out a note tonight about, might we consider having those meetings here at CVU? Because I saw the look around the table, and somebody suggested that, so you might be able to skip out.
Right, and go, okay, so that's, I've.
The budget meeting's here?
No, 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 the CSSU.
CSSU.
Okay.
The one you just got out of.
Okay, good.
Okay, so folks, can I have a motion to move into executive session for personnel matter?
Second.
Okay, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
So, uh, we're now out of executive session, um, so, I want to put my agenda away, but can I have a motion to, uh, accept the leave of absence request, uh, for, uh, Ms. Amanda Littler, right? Yes.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, uh, and, uh, I ask this, I ask this every, every time we do it. Do I need to take a motion to, Karen, I don't think so. Okay, you can just declare us out of, out of session, so.